I was gonna say, if you, before we get started, if you wanted to speak, make sure you sign up over here and get a copy of the agenda, okay? And you're back. Good evening, it's good to see all y'all. I now call to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, 7:00 PM, Board Meeting Room 39 Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McCluster, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Cheshire.
Here.
Mr. Dalton.
Here.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
Mr. Ingram.
Present. If you would, please join with us in a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and if you would stand for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Gentlemen, are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Ah, yes, sir. I'd like to make the motion to make the following revisions to the agenda. Remove item 10A, rezoning case number four at the request of the applicant. To add Danville, Pennsylvania County Community Service Funding to the agenda under matters from work session as item 13A. Add solar ordinance revisions as item 13B.
All right, sir, thank you. What about a second on Mr. Warren's motion?
Second on that. I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion, gentlemen? All right, if not, cast your vote. Okay, that is passed. What about a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. What about a second?
Second.
Mr. Warren, any discussion on that? Go ahead and cast your vote, gentlemen. And that is passed. What about a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Slow move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. What about a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion, gentlemen? If not, cast your vote on that. Okay, that brings us down to item eight. This is a time of presentation, it's a very special time. And gentlemen, if you would join me down front, and Timothy Peters, if you would come down, please, and after we make the presentation, I'm gonna have your family and friends come down. You know, this is one of the coolest parts of this job, is to be able to recognize and honor native sons and daughters who have done very well. And it's sort of bittersweet, because I was telling Timothy's mama, I probably pulled for him as long as she has, and that's being a bit facetious, but we have a resolution to honor Timothy tonight, and it is my honor to read this to you. The resolution honoring Timothy Peters is 2022-10-02. Virginia to Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting on Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. The following resolution is presented and adopted. Whereas local native Timothy Peters is an American professional stock car racing driver, and after 34 years of racing, has decided to retire. And whereas Peters began when he was eight years old, raced in go-karts, and he won 10 world karting championships and national titles. Whereas he quickly moved up the ranks through legend cars, winning numerous races, and then moved up to the late model stock car racing, wherein he, whereas he won the Orange County Speedway Track Championships in 2002 and 2003. And he also won the South Boston Speedway Track Championship in 2004. And whereas in 2005, Peters made his NASCAR Truck Series debut with Bobby Hamilton Racing, eventually ending up with Red Horse Racing from 2009 to 2017. Also making starts in numerous race teams such as Premier Motorsports, Niece Motorsports, GMS, MDM, Ricky Benton Racing, Youngest Motorsport, and Halwar Freezin Racing. And whereas Peters won 11 races in the NASCAR Truck Series at tracks such as Martinsville, Daytona, Bristol, Phoenix, Las Vegas, Talladega, Iowa, and Indianapolis, he made over 250 starts in the Truck Series. And whereas he also made starts in the NASCAR Cup Series with Ricky Benton Racing, as well as racing in the NASCAR Xfinity Series for Richard Childress Racing. Now therefore, it resolved that the board hereby expresses its admiration to Peters for his racing accomplishments and congratulates him on a well-deserved retirement. Adopted this 18th day of October 2022, William V. Ingram Chairman, Jay Vaden Hunt Interim County Administrator. Timothy, congratulations. And if you, if you would like to say something, the mic is all yours.
Well, first of all, thanks to the county for letting me, and you guys for recognizing this, it's pretty special, my family.
This is truly a special time for anybody that's a race fan, and you've grown up watching Timothy race. He's accomplished much, and you know, the sad thing about people with his talent, it's few and far in between to go much further, but he went as far as he could go, and we're so proud of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're gonna get a picture, just us, and then get your family, and I want Steve Stallings up here, because I think the last car you drove was owned by Steve, so, yeah. Okay, Sarah and family and Steve, would y'all, y'all please come up?
I was gonna, I was gonna tell you about a 24th thing, I was coming through the desert, and wow, I mean, I think it was, listening to Talladega. And it was exciting to, so, come, come on, Sarah. Oh, yeah, I'm telling you.
About what's in that shirt?
Y'all drive safe going home now. And it was such a joy to watch him race, too bad it had come to an end. Item B, schools 1%, I believe that's gonna be you, Dr. Jones. Good to have you, sir. Sort of hard to follow that one, isn't it?
Mr. Ingram, I will say that that family, I believe, goes to Stony Mill, and I believe she's our PTO president at Stony Mill, so.
That is true.
It is.
How about that?
Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening, and thank you all very much for passing the resolution just last year to place the sales tax referendum back on the ballot this year. You know, this is an important vote in November, and significant impact, will have a significant impact on the county over the next 20 years. I'd like to thank Caitlin McCluster for all that she's done. She has been a tremendous supporter, been out in schools, been out in the communities, so thank you very much for helping us out with this. Also, I think we have in the audience many people who've helped out with a radio of advertisements or videos that were airing right now, so we greatly appreciate their assistance as well. After I speak, I'd like to ask permission, if we could have Mrs. Linda Green to speak as well.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Green is a Vice President for Economic Development at the Institute. She's also the Executive Director of the Southern Virginia Regional Alliance, and she wants to speak this evening as well. But as you're aware, the General Assembly passed a bill that allowed certain low counties to, through referendum, issue a 1% sales tax, to be used solely for the purpose of capital projects for schools, cannot be used for any other reason. You know, our county is very large, land area, we're the largest in the state, and we're large as far as student population as well. At this time, on our capital improvement plan, we have $70 million worth of needs. We have eight older elementary schools that range in age from 84 years of age to 58, and they're in need of window replacements, HVAC, equipment upgrades, roof repairs, and other renovations. The school, the schools also have 26 mobile units serving as classrooms, and these create safety, safety concerns for staff and students travel outside to get back into school, into the school for lunch, to go to the restroom, or when called to the office. We live in a different world than when these schools were built, and the sales tax referendum funds will pay for the school division to build classrooms to replace those mobile units, so students do not have to leave to go outside to get back into the building to use the restroom or go to lunch. We also plan to build, construct safety vestibules in each of these schools that do not have them, and that's a double entry system where people can come in, get out of the cold, get out of the rain, but they still have to be identified and buzzed into the school. You know, again, we live in a different world, and we surely want our children to be safe, and that's the first priority for our, our sales tax referendum fund, is to be sure that our schools are safe.
That's right.
We also want to renovate our classrooms. We want to make innovative learning environments, spaces in our schools. You know, our young children are growing up in, again, a different time, and they're gonna compete with other students across the state, but also across the nation and across the globe, for college placements and for those coveted jobs that that will become available. So we surely want our kids to compete against others. And then we have a program, 19 programs at our Career and Technical Center, and we see business leaders wanting to hire those, those graduates, as well as parents and students wanting to get into those programs, so we'd like to expand the offerings there. So again, I thank you all for your tremendous leadership and, and passing that resolution last year to place this opportunity on the ballot in November. I encourage everyone to vote for this, this is quite an opportunity for our school division. At this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Linda Green to come.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Good evening, Ms. Linda. Good to see you.
Again, I'm Linda Green, I live in Bob Warren's district and have been in this county my entire life. Nothing makes me prouder than when I bring economic prospects into our school system. We've had person after person return home to try to mimic what is being done on a shoestring in our community. We're extremely proud of the fact that you put this on the agenda for the vote, so thank you for the resolution. But now it's time for us as citizens to look at what our neighboring counties have done. In all the surrounding cities and counties, they have already passed this. When you shop in Danville, you're paying this for their schools. When you shop in Martinsville, any of the surrounding areas, this is our chance to give back to our students. When we walk into the career and technical school or the middle schools, we have industries asking, how can we improve our industries to meet what you have done here? We had the governor from Arkansas come and spend an entire day in our school systems and return home and fund at 120-plus million what he saw happening here. In the meantime, we still have mobile units, we have security issues, we have a change in school system that's not as safe as it was when we were brought up. We have new challenges for technology, and students that will sit aside the brightest and the best coming from Pennsylvania County, they will excel, but this is our chance to make sure that we're giving them an opportunity to do as well as their surround, surrounding communities. So I thank you for all that you have done, you've been frugal with our money, you've taken good care of us. Now it's time for us as citizens to ante up and say, our children are important. We support you in every fight that you've made to save pennies for the county, now it's our chance to give back. Not to mention, if we did this through property taxes, it would be much more expensive to us. So this is a simple way for us to give one penny on a dollar. So I encourage all of you, all of the citizens in Pennsylvania County to vote yes on this referendum. When we walk the companies through, they're proud of your students, they're proud of our faculty, but our buildings are aging, and we want to make sure we let our citizens and our students know they are their number one responsibility to us. So it's our chance to say thank you back to them. I'd ask you to join me in voting yes.
Good, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dr. Jones, to show you how old I am, my children were at Stony Mill when I pleaded with a supervisor at the time to do something about the leaking roof, and it's still leaking, and we need to stand up as citizens and, and fix our schools, not only from the practical side, but from the safety side. And, and thank y'all so much for what you said. Gentlemen, any comments you'd like to follow?
Thank you so much, Dr. Jones, for doing such a wonderful job you do with the school systems. Ma'am, that was a good speech, I enjoyed that. I will tell you, the citizens tonight, that earlier we had meetings from 2:00 up until present, and as I come over here to Chatham, I went and voted, and you got my vote this evening. Just want to let you know, I want to be the example by setting example, and, and if you will, please get out, this, this will keep us from a lot of trouble, and it's, it's a good thing, I think, for our schools, and, and I'm, I'm all for it. I haven't spoke to this point, but thank y'all for really pushing it, I'm all for it, and I can't vote twice, but if I could, I'd go tomorrow, how about that? Thank y'all.
And you know, people that don't live here get to help us pay our bills, this is one of the few taxes that are, are paid by people just passing through.
That's right.
Thank y'all so much. We're down to item nine here, and of the citizens, each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county, or the registered agent or such resident of, or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit, shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Ms. McCluster, who do we have?
Joan Torkley Robinson.
Ms. Robinson, come on down. You take your time. And if you would, pull that mic down so we can hear you.
Now, why do you want me to pull the mic down, being a six feet, five inches tall person?
I knew you was gonna say that.
I like it.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Vice Chairman Ingram and to the board, it is a distinguished honor and a privilege for me to come to this hearing on tonight to participate in this process of taking care of county business. My name is Reverend Joan Torkley Robinson. I'm a native of Pennsylvania County. I am a resident of the Bannister District. I am a taxpayer and a owner of the property at 809 Concord Road, Chatham, Virginia. I am a pastor and a retired educator, having taught four of my 38 years of teaching in Pennsylvania County schools. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Bishop Kell Stone to serve on our Board of Supervisor as our Bannister District Representative. I met Mr. Stone at Greddner Senior High School during the school year of 1986 through 87. He was one of my math students. I was, I was very impressed in this young man as a young Christian boy having dedicated his life to God. As a young boy, I saw Reverend Kell as a caring, concerned, and a person willing to help others. He was focused and respectful as a young person. I observed him from a boy to man. He is a very qualified person to serve on our Board of Supervisors. As a man of faith, a family man, a strong supporter of our school system, I believe that Reverend Stone is a man of integrity, righteousness, and believe in treating everyone equally. Given an opportunity to serve on this board, I believe Reverend Stone will work to promote the welfare of all citizens. He works with our youth as well as the elderly in our community, and working with both groups and all in between, he is concerned of everyone. As an educated person, I believe Reverend Stone will seek diligently to work to make not only Bannister District a better community for all of us, but will give attention to our whole county and try his best to work with this board so all of our county will grow and move forward productively. As a pastor, he's aware that people have needs and that we can help one another if we work together. As a coach, working with our schools and students and parents, he's very familiar with the needs to, to work in this county for our children. He understands that our children are our greatest, greatest gift that God has given us, and by improving with them, we've already improved ourselves. I believe Bishop Kell Stone, as a representative of Bannister District, understands greatly the need of the citizen of this district. I believe he's willing to work with all in his might to do what he can to serve the citizens of Bannister and Pennsylvania County. With that in mind, I would say to you, I strongly support and hope that you will hear my support for Bishop Kell Stone. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Caitlin, who we have next?
Kathy Ramsey.
Ms. Kathy Ramsey, come on down. Good to have you, and you'll probably need to move the mic up. At least a foot or two.
Kathy Ramsey, Bannister District. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kathy Ramsey. I am a native of Pennsylvania County and a resident, reside at 7153 Halifax Road, Chatham, Virginia. I am a graduate of Greddner High School and Virginia State College, and a proud parent and grandparent. I am a retired educator for Pennsylvania County Schools and currently serve as tutor for the Pennsylvania County School System at the Regional Alternative School, Chatham, Virginia. I'm a proud resident of the Bannister District and respect and love Pennsylvania County and its residents. If given the opportunity to serve the Bannister District, I will respectfully keep the residents' needs, requests, and desires a priority, and represent the district to the best of my ability. Meeting the needs of the Bannister District residents, whether dealing with roads, whether dealing with roads, taxes, budget, housing, farming, construction, business, etc., all voices need to be heard. The Bannister District in the past has had strong, hardworking, successful leaders and has represented its residents well. The Foundation for Change has started, and I will continue to build the district as the leaders have done before. The Bannister District continues to need a patient, responsible, compassionate, listening ear to hear the district representatives. Regardless of how great or small the request is, I have the skill that the Bannister District need not only to continue a previous board members that have done, but not only make the district great, but to make it greater and thrive in producing strong, productive citizens and a wonderful place for families to live and to be proud of. My skill in bringing people together and working peacefully to accomplish their goals throughout the district for Pennsylvania County is evident. I'm a member and health advocate for the Pennsylvania County NAACP. I have also served as past president of Alpha Kappa Alpha sorority Incorporated, Alpha Phi Omega Chapter, Danville, Virginia. I was responsible for making sure that the business of the chapter, including membership, budget, fundraising, was executed. Our motto is "Service to All Being Kind." I am a charter member and past president of the Piedmont Pan-Hellenic Council, Danville, Virginia, that promotes general welfare of being women and children in the greater Piedmont geographic area. A chapter member organizer, executive administrator, advisor of the Danville Pennsylvania County National Society of Black Engineers. Now, let's be focused on STEM, education, and success of students in Pennsylvania County, Danville, and surrounding areas. And a scholarship is available to qualified students. I organized and implemented the SPICES for Life program in partnership with Baptist General Convention of Virginia. SPICES stands for Spiritual, Physical, Intellectual, Cognitive, Emotional, and Social Needs. I am a tutor for the Danville Church and Church-based tutorial program at Church Town Missionary Baptist Association in Ringo, Virginia. During the election year, I worked as polls for precinct 301 Central and presently serve as leader of the precinct. I also support the Institute of Advanced Learning and Research with the Altamers Walk, decorating reads for cause, breast cancer awareness, and American Heart Association, just to name a few. I enjoy being of service where I am needed. The service I will give to Bannister District and Pennsylvania County residents will be dependable, defined as capable of being trusted and depended on. Choose me as your interim Bannister District Representative, and you will get the best service and the utmost respect and absolute best service as a leader and representative. Thank you, Kathy Ramsey.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Caitlin, who's next?
Laverne Carr.
Good evening. Laverne Carr, Bannister District. To the elected board, concerning the vacated Bannister District seat on the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, many worthy applicants have expressed interest. However, I believe there is one applicant that stands head and shoulders above the fray. Reverend Robert M. Tucker is a lifetime resident of Pennsylvania County. He received his foundational education in the Pennsylvania County School System and furthered his education at Everett University. He is a dedicated family man, husband, father, and grandfather. Reverend Tucker is committed to God first, family second, and country. Reverend Tucker is a man of great integrity, impeccable character, and he is genuinely concerned about his fellow man. If appointed, I know he will work tirelessly for all the citizens of the Bannister District. Reverend Tucker has a well-documented track record of excellent leadership. He owns and operates a 200-acre farm in the county. Additionally, he manages a multimillion-dollar grossing auto dealership in Lynchburg. However, the thing that Reverend Tucker is most passionate about is his ministry. Reverend Tucker loves to tell the greatest story ever told, that of the gospel of Jesus Christ. He continues to pastor his church for more than 20 years. His business ethics, sense of integrity, education and experience, as well as his leadership skills, make him uniquely qualified for this seat. When he can find time, he enjoys golfing, collecting and restoring antique cars. He enjoys spending time with his family. Most of all, he just enjoys pitting around on the farm. The land, the dirt, is his life's blood. If appointed, Reverend Tucker will bring a fresh and unbiased perspective to his coveted seat. He has no political alliances nor axes to grind. Therefore, his opinions and decisions will be his own. Research-driven, informed, and completely objective. His only objective would be that what is best for the citizens of his district. When deliberating about who is best suited for this seat, I urge you to look very carefully at the record. Their resumes, biographies, backgrounds, temperament, education experience, leadership skills, efficacy, and political entanglement. And you will conclude that only one applicant makes the decision very easy. I therefore highly recommend Reverend Robert M. Tucker Jr.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hey Caitlin, who's next?
Anita Royston.
Ms. Royston. Good to have you.
Good evening. Before I begin, I just want to apologize for calling the code that was cited by Mr. Warren as obscure. It is relevant, though incomplete. So I apologize for that. Well, good evening. My name is Anita Royston. I'm not here representing the NAACP, nor am I representing WKBY radio station. I am here this evening as a private citizen and resident of the Bannister District in Pennsylvania County. I wholeheartedly believe that Pastor Kell Stone is the best candidate for you, for us as a district and as a county. He is a team player and with biblically-based values and standards which are known throughout the county. As a pastor, I have seen Kell Stone speak firmly and truthfully, and I have seen him as a basketball coach, leading the teams, not cussing and berating them, but encouraging them to be the best they can be. During the pandemic, he, Pastor Stone, gathered students who had no computers in their homes or whose parents were unable to assist in the teaching effort as effectively as needed. He worked with students at the Bridge in a partnership with PCS at the Bridge, which is a community center in the Bannister District. That was so impressive to me that I offered support. I pray that you all will consider the will of the people when making your decision on who will sit in the seat left by the Honorable Jesse Barxdel. The people spoke loudly this past November, saying who they wanted. They spoke loudly with over 60% of the voters by saying who they did not want for this position, for this seat. The people do not want someone who will brag and boast that they are the most powerful vote on the board. The people do not want someone who will make it known that whatever they want, they will get because they are the swing vote. This is something that I pray you take into consideration when you're making your decision on who you will select. I pray that you all can come together. We know that you are split three and three. And we know that whoever sits in that seat will have a powerful vote. If they are not fair, if they are not considerate of the heart of the people, we will be in trouble. Again, I pray that you will all prayerfully come together and let that seat be filled by someone who is going to be fair, by someone who is trusted by the community, to be global in the thinking and look out for not only the marginalized, not only for the underrepresented citizens, not only the business owners and other local politicians and leaders of the Commonwealth, but by all of the above together to make this a better county for all of us. And I pray that you will choose Pastor Kell L. Stone to fill this position because we want peace. We want forward-thinking and togetherness and not all this bickering that goes on up here. We have to set an example for the young people to learn by when they take the seats that you fill now. Not all this bickering. Please, please, please. Keep the will of the people who spoke through the ballot last November's landslide vote. Keep that in mind when you make your decision. Through their vote, through our vote, we not only showed who we wanted. When those votes were counted up, it showed who the citizens of Pennsylvania County, Bannister District, did not want. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Caitlin, who's next?
Vanessa Scares.
Ms. Scares, come on up.
My name is Vanessa Scares, and I reside in the Westover District. I would like to say thank you to each of you for serving on the Board of Supervisors. Yours is not a job for the faint of heart. I commend you for speaking up, even when it is not popular. I know each of you, at one time or another, has been criticized or misunderstood while doing what you felt was best for the county citizens. Each of you were elected to govern our county. To govern suggests knowing the codes and ordinances that you or previous supervisors adopted. Making the time to study those codes and ordinances will help you govern according to the law. I certainly hope that each one of you will commit to make the time to do this more often going forward so that we can avoid another meeting like last week. Forgive my terminology, but it was a train wreck, and it was so unnecessary. I'm telling my age now, but for the last 40 years, I have worked with and under a board of directors in multiple professional roles. I have lived through the filling of many unexpired terms on the board, but I've never seen a board operate in such dysfunction as I did last week. A point of replacement, a point of replacement. How hard should that be for a governing body? That's your job, no one else's. I think that it is time for each of you to consider why you are on this board. Were you talked into running? Or do you truly have the heart to serve the citizens? Are you here to promote your special interest group or to govern on behalf of all of the county residents? Do you have a personal agenda or the ability to roll up your sleeves and work together for the posterity of Pennsylvania County? As I watched that meeting last week, Proverbs 29:2 came to mind, which says, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked rule, the people mourn." And I literally felt like crying for every person present, you especially, for keeping order. Everyone on this board, every citizen present, I felt like crying. If you're sitting where you are right now, thinking that you were right during that meeting, you're missing the point that I'm trying to make. Each of you needs to realize that having a title does not make you a leader. You need to begin to lead in a way that will restore dignity to the county seat. I would ask that each of you set aside some time of serious self-reflection because our county residents deserve a board of supervisors that will govern by the law, not play politics. Forgive me if I sound too hard, but I would either like to see a few more resignations or a board with a common goal to make Pennsylvania County a place that our children and their children want to live, work, and raise a family. That should be the common goal. Let me close with my favorite scripture, which says, "What does the Lord require of you? To act justly, love mercy, and walk humbly with your God." That is Michael 6, verse 8. And I know my time is out, but I got one more thing, a very important lesson that my mother taught me I'd like to share. Always tell the truth, and you will never have to remember what you said. And that's all I got to say about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Scares. Who's next?
Jim Scares.
Come on up, Jim. It's gonna be hard to beat that one.
I'm gonna try. Good evening. My name is Jim Scares, and I live in the Westover District. First off tonight, I would like to speak out against a proposed RV park on Vandola Church Road. Although I don't live in the Vandola Church neighborhood, it is in the Westover District. And I feel it will negatively affect the neighborhood as well as the district. Many of the families in this neighborhood have over 100 years of history in this community. And to allow this RV park to move in will decimate those families. Add to that, there is very little known about this developer from Florida. From what I understand, this developer has had another proposed RV park turned down in Florida, in the state that he lives. The chairman of this board has publicly stated that if the majority of the citizens in this neighborhood are against the project, then he will vote against it. I strongly urge all the supervisors on this board to vote this project down as well. Secondly, I would like to thank the chairman of this board for finally coming to his senses and resigning from the DSS board. Last night's DSS board meeting was a lot less stressful without his negative influence there. The chairman claims his resignation had to do with offering up an olive branch, but he has yet to reach out to anyone with that branch in hand. I, on the other hand, think his resigning had more to do with the DSS board revising their bylaws to make the BOs position a non-voting advisory position only. Also, his embarrassing hour-long political hit piece targeting me in last month's DSS board meeting didn't have the effect he thought it would have on the Richmond DSS board members that were in attendance. Their opinion was that it had nothing, nothing, to do with DSS and should have never been allowed in that meeting. It's a shame he didn't know they were coming or they were going to be there that night. DSS Chairman Nancy Eens had requested that they be there to witness his behavior. If he had known, maybe if he had known, he may have decided to postpone his little sideshow. On the other hand, I'm glad he went ahead with his clown act. Not only did he alienate the rest of the DSS board, he also let the Richmond DSS board members see the real Victor Ingram, and they didn't like what they saw. Again, Chairman, I want to thank you for coming to your senses and resigning from the DSS board. It has made life for the other members of that board, as well as the workers for the DSS, more stress-free. Thank you.
Who's next, Caitlin?
Roy Newton Ford.
Ms. Ford, come on down, sir.
I'm Roy Newton Ford Jr. I'm resident of Westover District, own property in Blais, Virginia. I'm troubled by the meeting, or whatever it was called, last week. The Chatham Star Tribune website showed a crowd of black citizens being denied a chance to speak by three white supervisors. to speak by three white supervisors. Those same, those same board members last year approved a resolution that had the word racism in it when the leadership of the NAACP and the Dan River Blairs Civic League both asked me if I saw anything racist in the text that they cited, because they did not see racism in the text. Those folks have a concern that the people did not get to speak last week. It happens in the county where there's a Confederate private with a gun standing outside the courthouse, Confederate flags flying all over the county, and yet in this county, those folk who came, all of them, I think, that I saw in the picture were black, did not get to speak. The people came to the meeting because they considered the board of supervisors seat in the Bannister District an important position that ensures they have a voice in county government. In a non-election year, I have trouble seeing any reason for denying citizens a voice when considering one supervisor seat that is very important to the leaders of the NAACP, the Dan River Blairs Civic League. When people spoke as they are tonight, they would not have prevented this board from overriding their voices with whatever excuses that someone may offer to name whomever the board chooses. And as a white person, I am reluctant to contend that I know how the people in the Bannister District might decide or how they might vote if they vote on people being considered. I do feel that citizens from the district who took time to come and who have come tonight present to a meeting of the board of supervisors deserved a chance to speak on the matter that was important to them. I'm glad that some of them have had a chance to speak tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Ervin Moss.
Ervin Moss, come on down, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Pull that mic down a little bit. Thank you.
My name is Ervin Moss. I'm a lifetime resident of the Vandola community. I am a lifelong resident of Pennsylvania County. I'm a taxpayer, and I just want to extend greetings from the Vandola Road community. Let me tell you about my community. It's a quiet, peaceful, God-fearing community. I've lived there all my life. I worship there. I work there. I recently retired to the home farm there. But tonight, it troubles my heart to be here in front of this board. My community has come under fire. It's come under attack from people that have put money and greed before everything else. They're trying to slip in an RV park in a residential neighborhood. To me, I can't grasp that. What's up with that? We're a community. It's previously zoned residential, but all of a sudden, the almighty casino has come to town, and the dollar signs has got in people's eyes. I don't understand this. We can't, we can't destroy our community. Community, family is what America's based on, and this RV park offers nothing. We, uh, we have trust issues with this county government. It seems like it was slipped in, hopefully to be unnoticed. None of the residents were given an opportunity to voice their opinion. There are many unanswered questions. We want to know, why was the voting rescheduled? What's up with this developer? He seems shady from the get-go. We'd like to have some answers. How is Mr. Bartstale's replacement gonna be chosen fairly? He's a pivotal seat, the Bannister River, and I appreciate y'all here being, uh, supporting this man. That man has got a pivotal part, and he must be chosen fairly. Also, I'd like to know, why was the Vandola Road community chosen? Why? Why wasn't the West Ridge Farms, Dan's Hill, West Dennis Estates, or Deer Crest Drive? Why weren't they chosen? Why was the good community of the Vandola Road community chosen? We already have a trash dumpster site there. Now they want to put a RV park, which would give us two trash dump sites there. I, we would like to know who wants this RV park? It's only county government, relatives, and greedy land specutation, speculators. You know, I've been to all these town hall meetings. I've been before you guys many times. I have yet to see somebody stand up for this thing. Nobody wants it, except you guys and relatives. I mean, I don't know who and how you stand, but it sure is seemed to be pushed down our throat, and I apologize if I'm making wrong assumptions. And another question, uh, there's EMS issues that needs to be addressed, traffic issues, noise and light pollution, water concerns. My neighbor had his pond, fresh water, uh, water cut off to his pond from the fifty-eight bypass that went through. Who's to say this isn't gonna happen with the casino? I mean, with the RV park? It's just, it's not right for a residential community, and that's, and in closing, the longer I live, the more I can side with the Native Americans. White man came in, stole his land, raped it, and wanted to put up some trashy RV park all in the name of progress and this right here. So, thank you for my time, and I appreciate each and every one of you.
All right, Kayla, who's next?
Kel Stone.
Mr. Stone, come on down, sir. How are you?
Good evening. How y'all doing?
Very well.
My name is Kel Stone. I'm a resident of the Bannister District. I live on Hot Nits Road. I don't think there's anybody here that do not know me, so I won't take up a lot of time. I've had a few days to try to take a ten-minute presentation and condense it into three. So, I gotta cut out a lot of the things, and I'll get straight to the point. I'm not here to criticize any candidate, any applicant, because I believe that it's not, not one person here probably could do the job. But I think that the situation is, it is not who's best, but it's about who's right. Because I'm sure that there are many applicants here would be good, but I believe there's only one applicant that would be right, and that's myself. So I want to say to you guys that what do I bring to the table? It reminds me of a story that I heard. It was a little boy named Johnny. Johnny had a father that went to work one day, and as he got off work from a hard day's work, he sat at home and wanted to watch the news. And as he sat there, Johnny comes in and distracted his father. His dad told Johnny, said, Johnny, go, can you go play with your toys? Johnny left, and five minutes later, he was back distracting his dad. His dad said, well, Johnny, go clean your room. Johnny went and cleaned his room. Five minutes later, guess where Johnny was at? Back again, distracting his dad. His dad looked over, and it was yesterday's newspaper. And on the top of the yesterday's newspaper, there was a picture of the world, the map. The dad grabs the newspaper, he rips the newspaper up into pieces. Matter of fact, since his seventh district, we'll say seven pieces. He ripped it up in seven pieces, he hands that to his son. He says, I need you to go now and put the world back together. The son goes back, and the dad says, yes. He sits back in his recliner, and he says, I know he's gonna be gone for a while now, so I get to enjoy my news. Guess what? Five minutes later, Johnny is back in front of his dad. And his dad said, there's no way you got that world back together. And he says, yeah, Dad, I'm finished. And his dad looked at him, and he was amazed. He said to himself, my son must be a genius, that he was able to put this world back together in five minutes. The father turns to him and looks at his son, he says, how was you able to do that? The son said, Dad, it was real easy. He said, because on the other side of the world, there was a picture of a man. And he says, all I had to do was put the man together, because when you put the man together, the world come together. What I bring to this board, I bring to the board with the tenacity and the strength and the power, not to focus on the world, not to focus on the agenda. But I believe that when we put people back together, when we put families back together, when we put men back together, when we put women back together, when we put children back together, guess what happens? In five minutes, the world comes back together. I'm not the best, but I'm the right one. Thank y'all very much.
Willie Fitzgerald.
Mr. Fitzgerald, come on up, sir. Good to see you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chairman of the Board, other board members. As you know, my name is Willie Fitzgerald, and I'm a lifelong citizen of Pennsylvania County and Bannister District for the most part, except one time I got zoned out, but then they put me back in years ago. I'm a graduate of Northside High School, and upon graduating from high school, years later, I was, Uncle Sam said, I want you, so I had to go with the service, and I served my country. I split to Vietnam and put my life on the line. I thank God for allowing me to come back, and when I came back to this county, years later, we realized that we did not have a minority on the board to have a voice for the minority community. So in the nineties, and I'm skipping some things, so in the nineties, we came together and formulated a Bannister District. We were blessed to have Mr. William Pritchett to serve as that elected supervisor, and then he was able to not only serve, but to appoint other minorities to other boards, and that's been a blessing to this county. And then we came in on Wednesday evening, 2022, and it sounded like someone had put their knee on the Bannister District neck again. And as one put their knee on our neck, not allowing us then to have a chance to speak, the others just stood by and watched, which was a disgrace to all of us in Bannister District. Every candidate that was applying for this Bannister District seat had an opportunity just like everyone else to go out and get his or her supporters to come and support them one way or another. And that's what happened last Wednesday, but because the knee was on our neck, we were not allowed to speak. Then they wanted to send it to a judge, and you're gonna tell me a judge in this county can do better than you six that sit on the board, then we need to get rid of you and get the judges to come in here and be our supervisors. So, I am, yes, I'm here to support Kel Stone. Kel Stone asked me to support him. I have seen what he's done, some things that are ingrained for the good of the greater community. He has the Bridge Center for, uh, enable him to employ other, uh, people, give them jobs and other things. He has a church that's scribing, there and there. So, he is the candidate that I think the majority of Pennsylvania County would want, uh, Bannister District would want to serve them, him on that board. So I ask you tonight, you don't have to wait to go to the judge. This board can come back together anytime you want to and make the decision to appoint someone from Bannister District to represent Bannister District on that board, and you could save the taxpayers some money, you could save a judge some time to stop fooling with this craziness. And not only in your craziness, you are hampering industry from coming to this county because the way this board is acting, and so that is affecting all of the peoples in this county. So once again, I ask you to come together next week, Tuesday, Monday, this week, and appoint a person from Bannister District. I'm proud of all the candidates from the Bannister District. Thank you.
Thank you. What was the name again?
Good evening.
Hello.
Hey. I'm Vivian Jefferson. I live in Oak Ridge Farms, and I'm here to, again, try to dissuade you from voting for the rezoning for that RV park. Since the last time I spoke to you, I've had an opportunity to speak with a lot of my neighbors. There's a lot of homes in the Oak Ridge Farms division. Nobody, not one person told me that they wanted this RV park, not one. And I don't know how often you're thinking about the RV park. I think about it every day. I think about it when I get up in the morning. I think about it before I go to bed. It keeps me awake at night because I know that it's gonna ruin our way of life and that development. It's gonna impact us in a hugely negative way. It's, and it's, it may seem like no big deal to you, but our community has already endured all that's going on on the Berry Hill Road. You can be out in, at night, clank, 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 bang, bang, bang. I mean, it's just a noise, a lot of noise, and it used to be quiet. And they're putting the V-dots, putting the road through our community. So that's two assaults on our way of life already, and now we're supposed to have four hundred and fifty-four RV spaces. Not ten, not fifty, not a hundred, four hundred and fifty-four RV spaces. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of traffic. That's a lot of noise. That's a lot of burden on our already scarce resources in this region. So I'm just really, really concerned about what's gonna happen to us. You know, I'm thinking to myself, have I got to move to have some peace? Do I have to move out of the home that my husband and I built with our life savings? Do I have to completely move out of Danville? I mean, who knows? Who knows what's gonna happen? And there's some anxiety there, you know, if you're thinking about your whole life is kind of upside down. I don't know what's gonna happen with my well. I don't know what's gonna happen with trash collection. I don't know what's gonna happen with the EMS. I don't know anything that's gonna happen anymore. Nothing is sure, except that the sun is gonna come up in the morning, and it'll go down in the evening, and I'll be here until God comes or my time is up, one or the other. So I'm asking you, and you may have already made up your minds, but I'm asking you to really consider what you are, are doing to our community. And Mr. Kubus, when he compared the noise to freeway noise, how irrelevant is that for this area? We don't have a freeway. I mean, that's completely irrelevant. So, any miniscule numbers that he had compared to the freeway don't apply to us. You know, it's like, we don't have a subway. That does not apply to us. So I just ask you to really, really reconsider it and think about what this is gonna do to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Chairman and members, Pennsylvania County, World Two Voters. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Calvin Motley. I'm a resident of Pennsylvania County, Virginia, in the Bannister District. I stand to speak on behalf of Pastor Robert Tucker Jr. Please note that I've known Pastor Tucker for a period of eighteen years during the time that I served as senior pastor of the Elkhorn Baptist Church in Nathalie, Halifax County, Virginia, and also during subsequent years. Virginia, and also during subsequent years as I now serve as pastor of the Elkhorn Baptist Church up to and including this present time. From my personal experience, Pastor Tucker, who was a self-starter, has consistently demonstrated a positive can-do attitude with which he undergirds each endeavor that he's involved with study, research, training, and practice evaluation, and then he repeats more of the same. Although there are many positive attributes required of any person to serve as a member of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, integrity is one that rates high on the list, being that integrity speaks of the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles and uprightness. Therefore, as I think of integrity, I think of Pastor Robert Tucker. And when I think of Pastor Robert Tucker, I think of integrity. Also inscribed on all the coins in the US currency which we use today is the word e pluribus unum. And as you may know, e pluribus unum is a Latin word, and in its least common denominator means one among many. And as I think of one among many, I think of Pastor Robert Tucker. Also, when I think of Pastor Robert Tucker, I think of one among many. Therefore, in view of what I personally seen and heard of Pastor Tucker, and also his moral character, which is above reproach, it is my distinct pleasure to highly recommend Pastor Robert Tucker with enthusiasm as a respected and qualified applicant to serve as a member of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. Respectfully submitted, Dr. Cedrus Motley, retired United States Marine, retired educator Richmond Public Schools, past president clergy, associate in Halifax County, Virginia, and past emeritus Elkhorn Baptist Church, Halifax County, Virginia. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Motley.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
That's it?
That's all.
All right. Hey, thank you all for speaking. Brings us down to item 10. This is a rezoning public hearings pursuant to Article 5, Division 6, Pitts County zoning ordinance. Pitts County Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pitts County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to the goals that each, that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interests of Pitts County, its citizens, and its prosperity. This is public hearing case number R-22-028. Open the public hearing at 8:08 PM. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-22-028, Carol Dinkle has petitioned to rezone 16.08 acres located on State Road 638, Warwick Mill Road, in the Stanton River Election District from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to allow for the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zoned A-1. On September 6, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended by an eight-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dinkle, I don't believe is here to represent the petition, but I will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. Anybody else sign up to speak on that?
No, sir.
Okay. I now close the public hearing at 8:09. Mr. Dudley, what is your pleasure?
Yes, sir. In case R-22-028, I make a motion to approve the rezoning of 16.08 acres from R-1 Residential Subdivision District to A-1 Agriculture District to allow property lines to be adjusted.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you, Emily, for answering questions.
What about a second?
That is my motion.
Second. Ms. Cheshire?
Second.
Got you. Okay. Any discussion, questions, gentlemen? If not, cast your vote. Okay, that property has been rezoned. Thank you so much. This is case number two, number R-22-030. Ms. Ragsdale, I'm going to open the public hearing at 8:10 PM.
Case R-22-030, Randall and Tammy Rich have petitioned to rezone 10 acres located on State Road 878, Sony Mill Road, in the Tunsil Election District from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to allow for a Class B home occupation. On September 6, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended by an eight-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Randall Rich is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. Mr. Rich, you need to come up and say anything, would you like to? Okay, good, thank you. All right. No one signed up to speak, correct?
No, sir.
Okay. In case R-22-030, I make the motion to approve the rezoning of 10 acres from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agriculture District to allow for a Class B home occupant. Second.
Mr. Chairman, can I get you to close that public hearing?
I'm sorry.
Close that public hearing for me, please.
Yep, it's closed. Yeah, 8:11, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Thank you. Okay. That was my motion. Second. Any discussion, gentlemen? If not, cast your vote. Mr. Rich, your property has been rezoned. Thank you for coming. Okay, Ms. Ragsdale, this is case number three, public hearing R-22-031. I'm going to open the public hearing at 8:12 PM.
Case R-22-031, the city of Danville has petitioned to rezone 6.05 acres located on State Road 708 Long Circle in the Tunsil Election District from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent property zoned A-1. On September 6, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended by an eight-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, I do not believe that there is anyone here from the city to represent the petition, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe Mr. Gray is here. Would you like to speak, Jason?
I didn't see him, sorry.
That's okay. Anyone else sign up to speak?
No, sir.
All right. I close the public hearing at 8:13 PM, and I will make the motion that in case R-22-031, I make the motion to approve the rezoning of 6.50 acres from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agriculture District to allow property lines to be adjusted. Second. Thank you, sir. Any discussion, gentlemen? If not, cast your vote. That's been rezoned, sir. Thank you for coming. If you follow along, case number four has been moved, and we have no other public hearings. That brings us down to item 11, unfinished business. Do we have any?
No, sir.
Okay. What about 12, new business?
No, sir.
Thank you. Brings me down to 13, Madison, the work session. I do, I believe we do have some.
The first one is the DPCS funding.
I'm sorry, that's what Mr. Warren read, correct?
Yeah, the first one is 13A DPCS funding.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve DPCS funding as requested by Mr. Babo and as presented in the work session.
What about a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion on that? If not, cast your vote. And that has been approved. Mr. Warren, I believe you have another one.
Yes, sir. Add solar ordinance revisions as item 13B, and I guess Ms. Ragsdale is going to address
The staff is requesting your permission to take before the Planning Commission some additional solar regulations that would further restrict solar development in the county.
Okay. That's the motion. What about a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, too.
And if you would, go ahead and cast your vote. That brings us down to item 14, board member reports, board member reports there. What about you, Mr. Cheshire? What do you have?
I want to thank everybody first for coming out tonight. One of the greatest cornerstones of our democracy is, is public speaking. There was a time, not too long ago, that I was sitting in an audience on an issue that was brought up, actually several issues. And it's a shame, and I look at it now because I'm on the other side of the fence, that I did probably participate more. I'm learning more now that I'm a new member of the board than I ever thought I'd. Some days I wonder if I wanted to learn. But all joking aside, it is, it is a very, it's an enriching experience, and for have citizens to come up and voice their opinions, that's what this is all about. It's about what the people want. That's the reason our country was founded the way it was. We left England because we didn't like the way they were treated. So I'm very grateful for everyone to speak. I may not agree with everything, but I'm grateful that we have the opportunity that we can stand up and say what we want to say and not have repercussions as other countries do. They don't have the freedoms we do, and I hope, by God's grace, we continue to have those freedoms. I want to thank the board tonight. It's been a long day, and like again, I appreciate everyone being here and voicing their opinion. That's what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cheshire? I'm sorry, Mr. Dudley.
Okay. I thought you was going to double up and let him speak for me. I'm good with that, too.
I think you said it's been a long day. Mine started at 3:00 this morning.
Everybody here, thank you so much for coming out. I had one young lady right here on the front row. She got here early, I think about 6:00 o'clock, ain't that right? So it's been a long one for you, too. All right. Your voice matters, and I want to thank everybody for coming, speaking. I appreciate everybody coming and attending, being here, and just thank you so much. If everybody thought the same thing, it'd be a dull world we live in, and that's why we come and voice, and it's okay. So thank you so much. I want to thank the staff, too, for the hard work that they do to make our meeting as smooth as it is. Everybody on our staff just works very hard, and I really appreciate that. That's it. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Warren?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of things. First of all, I do want to comment about the school board referendum. I think it's really important. I don't think it's anybody in the audience that wouldn't like to have their 30% of their bills paid by someone else every month, and that's really what we're talking about. The bills are going to be there, but if we do it with sales tax, then 30% of their revenue, it's estimated that will come from outside of Pennsylvania County. And I think that we heard earlier today, we're already paying that if we buy anything in Halifax County or the city of Danville, so I think we owe it to them to give them the opportunity to help us pay ours as they pass into Pennsylvania County. I do want to address a little bit of the issue last night. I stayed and talked with some of you all last week that was at the meeting. I will stand up and fight for anybody's right to speak. However, I will always stand up for the law. And I will not compromise on that, and I will stand on protocol. We have never, to my knowledge, in Pennsylvania County, had a special call meeting that included a hearing of the citizens. That was the question for me in the state code last night. It was never to silence anyone or eliminate anyone's right to speak. I also will challenge you to pay close attention because that vacancy was available in September. Everyone could have come and spoke during a September meeting, but no one chose to do that. But you did choose to come tonight, and as I told you last week, if anyone tried to silence your vote during this meeting, that I would stand with you and fight to the end. I have great respect for Ms. Tarpley. I've known her a long time. I have great respect for Ms. Ramsey, who I've known a long time. Dr. Miller, I met Mr. Tucker last week. Mr. Stone, I've known for a few months, and I got to talk to him last week. I do think we have a good pool of applicants, so I'm looking forward to whoever that is and the opportunity to serve with him. There is one thing that I must bring up tonight, and I'm going to tell Mr. Ingram that I'm not doing this out of disrespect for him at all. I just think it's a matter that it's laid on my heart to say this. And there was some stuff put out on Facebook in relationship to our interim county administrator that he was drawing two salaries. That is false. It was very clear in the motion that was made to hire Mr. Hunt that he would draw the same pay we were paying the Berkeley group for Mr. Clarence Mundy, and that his salary as county attorney would be suspended till said time when he returned to be county attorney. So I want to apologize to you. I know that creates difficult situations, not only for yourself, but your family, and it's hard to manage and not have difficulties with your staff when they're hearing one thing and thinking another. We all make mistakes. I'm sure it was a mistake, but it was one that apparently was costly, could have been costly to Mr. Hunt. So for my board member, I apologize, and I will remind everyone that that decision and that motion that occurred was unanimously approved by this board. So it really did disappoint me to see that out on social media. And like I said, I know everybody makes mistakes. We all do. I'm certainly human. I've made my fair share. But to all of you all that came out tonight and not shunning anyone, but especially Ms. Tarpley, appreciate you being here, appreciate you speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Skiers?
Just like to thank everyone that came out to speak tonight. You may not believe it, but we do appreciate the feedback we get from every citizen. I'm sorry that there were any misconceptions about what happened last week, but we have certain protocols that we are supposed to follow. Some of the younger members, new members, may not understand that, but it could have saved us a lot of heartache last week if we hadn't put on the political sideshow on top of everything else. Again, I appreciate everyone that comes and speaks before this board, and I pay very much attention to what they're saying and try to take notes because it is important to how we make our decisions, and we can't do that without the input from the citizens. So I would encourage you to keep coming back here. Don't make this a one-time deal. Beat us up every opportunity you have. That's the best opportunity you're going to have to make us do the right thing for you, for the citizens of this county. So I thank you again for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Skiers. Mr. Dalton?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. We had a real good crowd here tonight. I had good comments on all the issues. Also, I want to think about one of the county employees that passed away last week, the Brumfield family. Keep them in your thoughts and prayers, and that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. You know, the hearing of the citizens, to me, is such an important sacred right that we enjoy. That's why it's the First Amendment, and there was people in this room that were deprived of that, and without... And without having to go through all the gory details, we tried to systematically have a meeting on the 5th, which was boycotted. I called a special meeting on the 12th. It was vetted by the county attorney. There was no problem with that. We went by the agenda, the same agenda that we use for other meetings. There was nothing that said that we could not allow citizens to speak. There was no violation of state law at all. What Mr. Warren read is, is a protocol if we, as a board, cannot decide what to do. And it's clear that we failed y'all as citizens by not replacing that Bannister District seat. And I apologize for that. And for months now, I've had to sit here and listen to false and slanderous accusations that will come back around. But yet, still yet, I embrace that First Amendment so much that I will sit here and listen to some absolute garbage, but it's part of the job. As I was told by Ben Davenport, you signed up for it. And I said, yes, sir, I did. So I do want to reemphasize the fact that, you know, you can come and apologize now, but the people that showed up that night through the public hearing that we vetted, that we advertised for, there's no sense in you not being allowed to speak, and I apologize for that. But you got your time tonight, and as far as I'm concerned, any time in the future. But my question again, the controversy over the hearing of the citizens, what would it have hurt? I've asked that question, and nobody's given me an answer. What would that have hurt? But anyway, on a brighter note, Jimmy Rich was hit and killed by a distracted driver not long ago, and there's a special run-walk in his memory to help educated distracted drivers. It's this Saturday. If you're interested, let me know. I had the honor last year of remembering Rachel Merricks, who turned ninety, well, she turned ninety-one this year. She was the original Tunstall High School lunchroom lady. I got a nice card here from Ann Moore Sparks in the chamber, and she just basically wanted to thank us for the twenty-five thousand dollars that we invested in the RevUp program. These funds went to help small businesses, and I know there were one or two up around the Grutton Way. So that was a good thing. Mackenzie Scott, if y'all don't know who she is, well, she's a billionaire lady. She's married to Jeff Bezos, and just recently gave thirteen million dollars to this area through the Danville Regional Foundation. And so that's gonna help us tremendously. And again, very grateful for that kind gift. Again, Timothy Peters hung up his helmet this year after thirty-four years of racing. He's made us proud. So having said that, I do echo what you said about the Brumfield family. Losing Rodney at such a young age was, he was a county employee with such a tragic loss. So Mr. Hunt, oh, before I forget, I made a mistake, and I apologize to you. And I clarified it.
You did, I appreciate it.
I wish more people were more passionate about lies and misinterpretations on Facebook than just one. But that's okay. You have the floor, sir.
I just echoed what you and Mr. Dalton have said about Rodney Brumfield. I didn't know him well, but every time he came to my office to fix something, he just used to crack me up. He always left me with a smile. He died far too young. He was only fifty years old. He battled both addiction and some medical demons, and he overcame them. He loved NASCAR. He loved his dog. He loved his sister and her family. And he was just, just a really hilarious and motivated and diligent employee. He will be missed. I could not attend the funeral, but Mr. Arnold went in my place, and I just want everybody to lift up his family. And I know that Rodney is resting easy today. But I want everybody to think about him, and I also want to thank everybody for coming out. I thought this was a very positive meeting today. And I know everybody's tired, and I think it's time to go home.
Having said that, motion adjourned.